I will call today's City of Bloomington Common Council regular session to order. Today is Wednesday, December 1st, a little after 6:30 PM. Before we get started, the first thing I would like to do is to give a, if at all possible, acknowledgement of the Bloomington area land grants, which acknowledges and recognizes the land that we're sit upon was occupied and nurtured by Native American tribes or Native American peoples before we built upon these lands. Those Native American tribes were the Miami Peoples, the Delaware Peoples, the Potawatomi Peoples, and the Shawnee Peoples. So we just really want to give acknowledgement to that land grant use. And I will now proceed and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Bolin? Rosenbarger?
Here.
Scamblerie?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We'll move down through the agenda summation. We do have minutes for approval this evening. January 13th of 2021, January 20th of 2021, and February 3rd of 2021. Then we'll move down to reports. We'll have reports from council members, if any, from the mayor and city offices, if any, council committees, and then finally we'll have public comment. A maximum of 20 minutes is set aside for each part of this section. And members of the public may speak on matters of community concern not listed on the agenda at one of the two public comment opportunities. Citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both. Speakers are allowed five minutes at this time allotted, may be reduced by the presiding officer if numerous people wish to speak. Then we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Then we have legislation for first readings. First, a piece of legislation is ordinance 21-46 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to Establish a Historic District Regarding the James Ferris House Historic District, William Bianco Owner and Petitioner. Then we'll move to legislation for second readings and resolutions. First will be appropriation ordinance 21-05 to specifically appropriate from the General Fund, the Public Safety Local Income Tax Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Community Lift Capital Development Fund, Food and Beverage Tax Fund, Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Police Pension Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, and the Rental Inspection Program Fund, expenditures not otherwise appropriated, and to appropriate the proceeds of the solar refunding bonds of 2021, appropriating various transfers of funds within the General Fund, the Public Safety Lift Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, the Community Someone help me, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Police Pension Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the General Fund, Food and Beverage Tax, Rental Inspection Fund, the Motor Vehicle Highway, Solid Waste Fund, and the proceeds from the solar refunding bonds, refunding bonds of 2021. That legislation had a due pass recommendation of 800 in the Committee of the Whole. We'll move on to second piece, which is Resolution 21-36, a resolution supporting the establishment of a sibling city relationship with the city of Palo Alto, California. And then finally, we'll have ordinance 21-45 to amend Title 7 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Animals regarding amending Chapter 7.01 Definitions, Chapter 7.16 Commercial Animal Establishment Permits, Chapter 7.54 Fees, and Chapter 7.56 Enforcement Procedures. The Committee of the Whole recommendation was a due pass recommendations of 702. We will then move on to additional public comment, where a maximum of 25 minutes will be set aside for this section. Then we'll deal with matters of council scheduling before we move to adjournment. I do believe we have minutes for approval. Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to move that the minutes for January 13th, 2001, January 20th, 2021, and February 3rd, 2021 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second that we approve the minutes as listed in the motion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Um, May, excuse me, President Sims?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
May I ask a question before the vote?
Yes, I do apologize. I was looking down. Yes, you may.
Oh, no problem. Um, I wanted to just check with the chief deputy clerk that the typographic corrections that I submitted last night were incorporated into the January 13th minutes?
They have been, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. My apologies again. Okay, now, the clerk, please call the roll. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those minutes were approved 70. Now we'll move down to reports. We'll begin with council members. And if there's no objections from my colleagues, I'll start this evening. And what I like to do is offer very sincere congratulations to our council administrator attorney, Mr. Steven Lucas and his wife Danielle. And they are the new and proud parents of a six, approximately six-pound, 19-inch beautiful baby girl named Charlotte K. Lucas. So we just really wanted to acknowledge that. Understand she's beginning to sleep. The dog, their pet, will not leave her side just yet. So we just want to acknowledge that and say, get well soon, and hope mom and baby and dad is recovering nicely. And I don't have any more. Now, do we have any other comments from the council members? Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, just to remind constituents in District 5 and anybody else who's interested that I will hold my last monthly constituent meeting of 2021 on Saturday, December 11th, at 11:00 AM. And the Zoom link can be found on the city council website. So I welcome anybody, especially those in District 5, to come and chat about city issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, President Sims. My comments concerns a resolution that we, that the council adopted some weeks ago, and that was our nuclear resolution that, among other things, called for nuclear powers to pay mind to coming back from the brink, essentially, from hair trigger, a hair trigger response. Of course, flashpoints exist around the world between nuclear powers. One of them is currently in the Ukraine and Eastern Ukraine, between Ukraine, NATO, and Russia. And this is, I think, a very dangerous situation, and I think that the rhetoric is escalating. We know that no one wants nuclear war, but the potential for an accident increases at times like this. So I'll be contacting our congressional representatives to ask them to use whatever influence they have to instruct those in the military and in diplomacy to ratchet down the rhetoric and come to some meetings instead of this crazy brinkmanship that we're witnessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Do we have any other further comment from Councilmembers Scamblerie?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to extend an invitation certainly to anyone in the city, but particularly to residents of District 2, to my upcoming constituent meeting. It will be this Saturday, December 4th, at 1:30 PM via Zoom. The link is sueforcitycouncil.com. When you go to that website, you'll just see a big button that says, join. Just click on that, and that'll take you directly to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scamblerie. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Just a reminder that Councilmember Rallo and I host a joint town hall meeting every month, and our next one will be December the 18th. Those start at 10 o'clock and go to 11:30. We do appreciate anyone who plans on attending. If you will email me any questions in advance, we can then do our due diligence in researching that topic. These are meetings that have no agenda. It's whatever the constituents want to bring to the table. So again, December the 18th, our Zoom links are also on the council's website. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Do we have any other council member comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move through the agenda to reports from the mayor and city offices, if any. Okay, seeing none. We now have reports from council committees, if any. Seeing none, we will now go to public comment. I will remind the public that you may speak on matters of community concern not listed on the agenda at one of the two public comment opportunities, of which this is one. Citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both, and you will be allowed five minutes. And this time allotment may be reduced by the presiding officer if numerous people wish to speak. Ms. Lacy, do we have?
See, one raised hand. Greg Alexander?
Okay, and thank you. And before we give him access, I will remind the publics that in order to indicate that you wish to make public comment, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. You can get there by using the participants button, or the reactions button, or the more buttons at the bottom of your screen. Those on a mobile device or a phone can reach us by using star nine. If in the event that any of those don't work, please send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom to indicate your desire to speak. Okay, Ms. Lacy?
Mr. Alexander should be able to unmute now.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Alexander.
Great. Hi, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. A month ago, I told you all about a U report filed by someone who lives in Beeline High Apartments at about 10th and Rogers, and they can't get to the bus stop without walking in the street or doing something kind of stupid because there is no sidewalk on one side of the street where the bus stop is, because there's missing curb ramps, and they're disabled. And yesterday, I actually saw it in the flash. I saw a man walking very slowly on my side of the street, which isn't where the bus stop is. And he had like a wheeled walker device. And he was going very, very slowly. But then he got to where he was directly across from his bus stop, and he jaywalked exactly at that point, because there wasn't sidewalk on the other side that he could use to get there. And when he was crossing the road, he almost ran. You would almost think that he was faking his disability, but he wasn't. He was just very afraid when he was in the road. And this is a very common phenomenon when sidewalks and bike lanes and other road infrastructure is so poor that people are forced to walk in the road, and they're terrified, and they're taking more risks. And so that segues to an experience I had recently. I was biking to the 7 Line, but I was on Indiana Avenue where there's no bike lane. There's no, there's no nothing. And I'm a pre-season vehicular cyclist capable of going fast enough to keep up with traffic. But I was definitely, I was going as fast as I could, because I wanted to get out of that situation. And I mean, I was stupid. This is on me. This is one of the things where you just learn the cost of being stupid and in your 40s. But I fell off the bike on my own, and I actually, I broke two bones in my hand. And so for, what, six weeks, I had very, very limited use of my hands. And you know, when scooters, when you all considered scooters about two years ago, we were told that there'd be enforcement, that when they're parked on the sidewalk, that they'd be fine. And I kind of knew most of them wouldn't get reported, because it's so easy to just throw them off the sidewalk. And you know, it takes a couple of minutes to report them. But when my hand wasn't working right, I couldn't throw them off the sidewalk. And so there was one that, it was a real effort. It was painful, and I did drag it off the sidewalk, and it came back the very next day. And I was like, well, this is a repeat. This needs enforcement. And so I went to try to report it. And U report didn't have an option for Veo Ride for the scooter company. And so I started calling different city offices, and nobody knew what to do with it. And eventually wound up, everybody said the mayor's office was the authority on this subject, and they just told me to report it to Veo Ride. And so I was like, how, how is the city doing enforcement if it just lands on the private company to do enforcement? And so I didn't have time for this, but Dave Askens, bless his heart, he came up with this all on his own. He went and he asked the city, how many tickets have you written? And it's zero, zero enforcement in two years. And it was, it was city staff that had come to you guys and said there was going to be enforcement. So that's like a dishonesty, a trust problem. But also, we've got all these scooters in the sidewalk, and nobody's training the students not to just leave scooters in the sidewalk. And from a disability perspective, you know, temporarily losing use of my hands is the mildest possible disability, but already I was feeling that pinch. And so I don't know what to do, but luckily for me, you know, my hands have healed. And I was walking back from the basketball game, just a mile's walk on 17th Street, and I threw six, I just picked them up like I was Superman. I just picked them up and threw them off the sidewalk. It was amazing. Six scooters in just a mile. But you know, this is a big problem that the mayor's actually taken in a decent amount of money that the administration has from the scooter companies, and they haven't done a thing about this scooters on sidewalks problem. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do we have anything else, Ms. Lacy? Or anyone else? I'm sorry.
I do not see any other raised hands, and I do not have any messages in the chat.
Okay, we'll give it just another second. Okay, seeing none. Good evening, Councilmember Bollin.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Right, good evening. Seeing no more public comment. We will now go to any, on the agenda, appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments this evening? Okay, seeing none. We will now move down to legislation for first readings. I believe we do have legislation for first readings this evening. Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to move that ordinance 21-46 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second, that ordinance 21-46. Be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion now passes. I got a little bit ahead of myself just there. And it has now been properly moved to second, that ordinance 21-46 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 21-46 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to Establish a Historic District Regarding the James Ferris House Historic District, William Bianco Owner and Petitioner. The synopsis is, this ordinance amends Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled List of Designated Historic and Conservation Districts in order to designate the James Ferris House parcel number 53-08-03-300-001.000-009 located at 2001 East Hillside Drive, Lot 8, City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, as a historic district. Built in 1852, the James Ferris House is a remarkable intact example of the "I" house form in Bloomington. The home is only one of a handful of covenanter brick farmhouses from the early settlement period of Bloomington that still stand, and it maintains a high level of historic integrity due to the unaltered state of the original portion of the house. The house is associated with James Ferris, the first ordained minister of the Covenanter Church in Bloomington, a philanthropist, and a purported conductor of the Underground Railroad.
Thank you very much. Ordinance 21-46. Normally, I think this would be a candidate to be referred to the Committee of the Whole. But this ordinance was discussed at a previous work session. This legislation is relatively straightforward. And if there is no objection, this item will appear on the agenda for second reading after regular session scheduled for December 15, 2021, at 6:30 PM. Seeing no objections, it is so. Thank you. I do believe we have legislation for second reading. Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move that appropriation ordinance 21-05 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second, that appropriation ordinance 21-05 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bolin?
Yes.
Is it everyone? Thank you. That motion passes 80. It has been moved in second, that appropriation ordinance 21-05 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 21-05 to specially appropriate from the General Fund, Public Safety LIT Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Food and Beverage Tax Fund, Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Police Pension Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, and the Rental Inspection Program Fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated, and to appropriate the proceeds of the solar refunding bonds of 2021. Appropriating various transfers of funds within the General Fund, Public Safety LIT Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Police Pension Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the General Fund, Food and Beverage Tax, Rental Inspection Fund, Motor Vehicle Highway, Solid Waste Fund, and the proceeds from the solar refunding bonds of 2021. The synopsis is, this ordinance appropriates various transfers of funds within the General Fund, Public Safety LIT Fund, Parks and Recreation General Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, and Police Pension Fund. It also appropriates additional funds from the General Fund, Food and Beverage Tax Fund, Rental Inspection Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, and appropriates the proceeds from the 2021 solar refunding bonds. Note, this ordinance was revised after distribution in the legislative packet, but before introduction at the November 17th, 2021 regular session, to revise the second whereas clause and insert a third, the third whereas clause to separate out transfers between Police Department and dispatch, and to specify the sources for those transfers. Correct the fifth whereas clause to reflect a transfer of funds by the Parks and Recreation Department from Classification 1 to classifications 2 and 3, as opposed to a transfer from classifications 2 and 3 to Classification 1, and amend the corresponding portions of Section 1 of the ordinance to reflect these changes.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk, we bow. I see that we do have city staff, Mr. Underwood, this evening.
I'm sorry. I have ordered, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move that appropriation ordinance 21-05 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved to second. Now we have City Representative Jeff Underwood to speak on the ordinance 21-05 appropriation ordinance. How are you, sir?
Is fine. Good evening, Jeff Underwood, City Controller. I would also like to note for the record that this is also serving as the public meeting as required for additional appropriations and for the appropriation of the bonds proceeds, and was duly advertised in the paper 10 days before the meeting. Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well. I'm going to give you a shortened version of the memo tonight, but we'll be happy to answer detailed questions if you have them. Appropriation ordinance 21-05 is our comprehensive 2021 year-end appropriation. The total additional appropriation is $2,241,274. This request covers 10 different funds, of which only five funds are needing additional funds. The other five funds only request moving funds between major categories. In addition, as we've noted at the Committee of the Whole meeting, we've added the required appropriation request for the solar refunding bonds. This request is to appropriate the proceeds of the bonds in the amount of $13,100,000, the combined total of the appropriation request is $15,341,274. In the General Fund, there are various departments. I'm going to break them down into two categories. Those departments that are requesting additional funds and those that are requesting transfers only. Unlike previous years, a gross request for the General Fund is $1,732,862. However, we'll be receiving a total of $1,150,921 in reimbursements. That's $1,050 from TIF funding to reimburse for road improvements, costs in engineering, $16,000 in fees for a conference hosted by the Police Department, and $84,921 from Bloomington Transit for their cost share for bus shelter appropriations, improvements, excuse me. In addition, we'll be transferring into the General Fund as a result of this ordinance, $300,000 from the Rental Inspection Fund. Accounting for these funds, the request for the General Fund is a total of $281,940. The bulk of this request is for the Fire Department to cover wages and benefits related to the Fire Union contract that was ratified after the budget had been approved. This ordinance will have no fiscal impact on the city's property tax rate. All funds that we'll talk about tonight that are requesting additional funds have adequate fund balances to support these additional requests. The departments that are requesting additional appropriations is the Public Works Administration Department. They're requesting an additional appropriation of $129,921 in capital to assist in covering costs related to the transit bus stop project and additional sidewalk repairs. And as I noted earlier, $84,921 is being reimbursed by the Transit Department. Housing and Neighborhood Development, the Hand Department, is requesting an additional appropriation of $88,502 in Classification 1 Personnel Services. This is due to two things, allocations between the General Fund and Grants. As I mentioned last time, we tried to look in our crystal ball and see how much funds will be available to support salaries and the grants, and then the remainder is the General Fund typically, you know, to the good. But this year, we were short. In addition, the former director retired, and there was a paid cumulative leave in accordance with city policy. The Engineering Department is requesting an additional appropriation of $1,050 in Classification 3, and again, that's related to road improvements and repairs. And again, as noted, this, this will be reimbursed by TIF funding. The Fire Department is requesting an additional appropriation of $550,000 in Classification 1, again, due to union contract that was ratified after the fact, and $100,000 in Classification 3 Services to cover costs related to the cleanup of the voluntary burn. The Legal Department is requesting an additional appropriation of $4,000 in Classification 1 Personnel Services to cover costs related to payment of cumulative leave for the Corporation Council, and $250,000 in Classification 3 Services to cover outside legal counsel-related annexation that was not included in the 2021 budget. The mayor's office is requesting an additional appropriation twenty-five hundred dollars in Classification Two Supplies, provide funding for additional supplies to cover COVID-nineteen expenditures. And then finally, the Human Resource Department is requesting a transfer from Classification One and an additional appropriation of eighty-eight thousand, four sixty to cover the costs related for training for the Center for Equity and Inclusion for Anti-Racism Training that we have begun. The departments that were requesting transfers or releases only, Animal Care and Control, Clerk, Community and Family, Community and Family, and Common Council, Controller, Economic and Sustainability, Police, and Planning. Moving on to other funds that are requesting additional appropriations, Food and Beverage E S D is requesting a hundred and twenty-two-five, and this was related to recover forward loans, and those costs will be recovered in future years as repayments are completed. Motor Vehicle Highway Fund Street Division is requesting additional appropriation of thirty-nine thousand, seventy-four dollars for Classification Three Services to cover higher insurance premiums. Solid Waste Fund Sanitation Division is requesting an additional appropriation of forty-six thousand, eight thirty-nine for Classification Three Services to cover fees related increase in solid waste and recycling and higher insurance premiums. Funds with transfer requests with no additional funds, Public Safety Local Income Tax, the Police Department, Public Safety Local Income Tax, Central Dispatch, Parks General Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, and the Police Pension Fund. Finally, as noted in the Rental Inspection Program Fund, in two thousand and twelve, state legislature created new rules regarding rental inspection, and basically, we have to deposit those fees into this fund, and then we're allowed to transfer that money to where the expenses of the program are actually paid out of, which in this case are the General Fund, and we're requesting three hundred thousand dollars, which was approximately amount collected over the prior eleven months. And that will all go to offset the costs as well. And then finally, the additional appropriation for the twenty twenty-one solar refunding bonds, and we're requesting that be appropriated so that we can pay for the costs to refund and repay the twenty seventeen lease, including the cost of issuing the refunding bonds. And again, thank you for the approval of those two refunding bonds. We're going to market tomorrow, on the week after, on this. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Underwood. We'll now go to council for any council questions. Okay, seeing none, we will now go to the public for any public comment on appropriation ordinance twenty-one dash oh five. I will remind the public, you can indicate your desire to make a public comment by using the raised hand function in Zoom. You can get there by using a participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons, or if you have a mobile device or a phone, you can reach us by star nine. And if neither of those work, please send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom indicating your desire to speak publicly. You will be allowed five minutes. Do we have any takers, Ms. Lacy? Think you're muted.
Hear me?
No, I do now.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry. I do not have any chat messages, and there are no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no public commenters, we'll now go back to council for any final comments on appropriation ordinance twenty-one dash oh five. Okay, seeing no final comments, are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll for appropriation ordinance twenty-one dash oh five?
Councilmember Scambler?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is adopted eight-zero-zero.
Thank you very much.
You, thank you, Mr. Underwood. I do believe we have more legislation for second reading. Councilmember Scambler?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second of that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six be introduced or read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. And it's been properly moved in that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six be introduced or read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six, a resolution supporting the establishment of a sibling city relationship with the city of Palo Alto, California. The synopsis is, through this resolution, the Common Council of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, expresses its support for establishing a sibling city relationship with the city of Palo Alto, California, which will be memorialized in an agreement between the two cities. The goal of this relationship is to foster cross-regional connection by, one, introducing opportunities to build understanding, respect, and friendship through the collaborative exploration of the culture, arts, community service, and unique attributes of each city; two, promoting economic and business opportunities, including sustainability practices; and three, engaging in respectful civil discourse about the issues that face our nation today.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. And I see that we have distinguished, I'm so sorry, for everyone to get through this this evening or not. Councilmember Scambler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move that resolution twenty-one dash thirty-six be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second, and I do believe we have Mayor John Hamilton to present this evening, and we do have with us this evening Mayor of Palo Alto, Mr. Tom Dubois, and Ms. Karen Howe Fernandez, as well as my friend Vicky Venker. So, good to see you all this evening. Mayor, will you please begin, sir?
Thank you very much. It is great to see you all, and I'll be brief, but I wanted to just make a few comments. I do appreciate the opportunity to encourage the passing of this resolution in support of a sibling city relationship with Palo Alto, California. As you know, we have two active international sister cities, Posultega, Nicaragua, and Santa Clara, Cuba, and those have been driven by community members for many years. A domestic sibling city, a relationship, a pairing between cities within the United States, is a new idea, and new to me, and I think new to most of us. You'll hear shortly from Vicky Venker, who has been one of the, really, the leading voices about this and trying to move this forward in the country, and you'll hear more. But the idea really is to help knit our country back together, help create relationships kind of across different regions of the country. We all know how much stereotyping and sense of division that we can see in different ways within our own country, and I have to tell you, when I first heard of this concept, I loved it, the idea of municipalities, communities in the country, helping to do our work at the ground level to build relationships, knit us together, create linkages that will strengthen our communities, but frankly, also our country. You'll hear shortly from Mayor Tom Dubois from Palo Alto, who's my new good friend. We met earlier this year. We've had several discussions and meetings, and indeed, on November fifteenth, I was present at the Palo Alto City Council meeting when they adopted a very much parallel resolution on this sibling city. There are similarities and differences between Palo Alto and Bloomington. We have much in common, but we also, of course, live in different parts of the country, in a different region, in a different metropolitan setting, rural setting, et cetera. It's really exciting and interesting to think about the domestic relationships. I want to note, you'll hear also from Karen Howe Fernandez, who's volunteered to play a role, the role, as local coordinator, who has already been bringing together, and we've had connections and meetings with Chamber of Commerce and Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, and municipal, the school corporation, Monroe County Schools, and Ivy Tech, and Indiana University, and IU Ventures, and the mill, and service clubs, and more folks who are already engaged thinking about this at the community level. So, in a lot of ways, we have some formal action to take, and I strongly hope that you will do so, and governments have a role to move this, but this will be driven by our residents and our organizations finding these connections, making them happen. We will certainly facilitate them, but I'm very, I'm thrilled and excited to think about the prospects going forward. Palo Alto, of course, known as the home of Silicon Valley and part of a very dynamic metropolitan region. I think the opportunities are really great for us. This happened because Tom Dubois and Vicky Venker and I started talking. We explored this, and I have to say, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. It's uncertain, not exactly clear what will happen, but we'll let our community lead the way in the coming months. I'd be happy to answer questions. Mostly, I urge you to adopt this. I will note, we plan to have key success indicators for this program that will be identified in an annual report to our respective city councils from the year we start each year on how it's going and on those indicators. Also, of course, we will learn how it compares to the international city efforts that are so community-led, and look forward to that. But with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to welcome Mayor Tom Dubois to make a few comments as well.
Thank you. Welcome, Mayor Dubois.
Hey, thanks, John. Good to see you, Jim. Mayor Hamilton, I think you covered the proposal really well. I did want to say, whoever read the title for the item, I really liked the Spanish pronunciation of Palo Alto. We've kind of Americanized it. So, hello to everyone, council. Thank you for letting me join your meeting. And as Mayor Hamilton said, a few weeks ago, our council enthusiastically passed a motion to form a sibling city relationship with Bloomington, and I can share that a lot of people here are very excited about it, and I know they're already itching to plan some events between our two cities, and I think all of our respective Rotary Clubs are actually meeting this Friday. And I personally, I grew up in Ohio, and I've been to Bloomington, you know, it's a beautiful city, and I'm really excited about our two cities exchanging ideas, possibly exchanging students, best practices, and I'm also excited about our two cities leading the way on what we hope to become a national program that would encourage more and more cities to form these relationships. And as Mayor Hamilton outlined, you know, the idea is to really heal some of the divisions within our country, strengthen our ties, and just create more unity across the country. And so, I hope and respectfully ask that you guys will pass this resolution, and I also want to just thank everybody that's been involved on the Bloomington side to get us to this point, and I hope this beginning of a beautiful friendship. So, thanks for letting me say a few words.
Thank you very much for being here, Mayor Hamilton.
Thank you so much, Mayor Dubois. Appreciate you being here, and I think, again, with your permission, we'd like to let, on behalf of this team, Vicky Venker and then Karen Howe Fernandez, speak, and then hand it back to you for the normal course of business, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Hello, Ms. Venker. How are you?
I'm well, thank you, President Sims. Thank you. So, good evening, council members. My name is Vicky Venker, and I am the founder of Sibling Cities USA and a resident of both Bloomington and Palo Alto. It's really a privilege to speak to you tonight on this resolution, and I want to thank both Mayors Hamilton and Dubois for their leadership in pursuing this first-ever sibling cities pair. These are two very special cities, and if council approves this resolution, I believe these two cities will both surprise and delight each other. And mainly, I wanted to talk to you tonight about Sibling Cities USA because we are ready to support this pilot. We're a national nonprofit founded to bridge regional divides by building relationships between U.S. cities, to give Americans what they really want, to move past today's extreme polarization to a better and more united America. And I truly believe that if Americans get to know each other better, we will get along better. So, Sibling Cities USA provides a framework for these relationships. We call it the three Cs of connection, community, commerce, and civil discourse. The first, community, involves community groups, students, and more getting to know each other. The second, commerce, allows the business communities to compare notes and explore opportunities. And then, once we get to know each other, the third, civil discourse, will help us have respectful conversations across the miles to build understanding around the tough issues facing our nation. Sibling Cities USA has a national advisory board that can help. It includes a former cabinet secretary and a former National NAACP president. Three of our advisors have led national bridge-building organizations, and two others are renowned professors with expertise in gender equity, class issues, and civil rights. So, these two cities would be the first city pair, but not the last. Most people who learn about sibling cities immediately suggest a city to be involved, usually their hometown, and Sibling Cities USA is already making plans to grow and expand the network of city pairs across the country. Building bridges between Bloomington and Palo Alto would be the historic first step. So, I hope you'll support and approve this resolution, and thank you for letting me address the council.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Ms. Fernandez.
Good evening. Thanks for your time this evening. Nice to see you all. Thanks to our mayors. I think they did a great job of telling you about what we're doing. Thank you, Vicky. I'm here to say I'm the local coordinator right now. I am doing person-to-person intercepts of people who are interested. You've got a little bit of how this started, who's on board, but I want, I'm here to let you know that we have really deep community interest, and I can't stop smiling because it's been so exciting to me, the amount of people who have, since the mayor's joint press release, contacted us, and they've called us to tell us that they want to make a connection, or they have a connection, and they have expertise, and they want to volunteer in some way to be a part of this. Just this week, I met with our potential first sibling, a gentleman who moved here to Meadowwood after spending fifty years in the Bay Area, and has some really great ideas for reaching out between some senior organizations, which I thought was a part of the community pillar that was really important. I also want to let you know that Kirk White sent me a text just a little while ago. He's caught up at a dinner, but he wanted to express IU's support for this as well. So, we're fielding these connections email by email right now. We're making spreadsheets. We're talking to people. We're getting excited, and we're also developing tools to streamline the process and to better intake people and match them up with our, my counterpart, Andy Reed, who's in Palo Alto, is here tonight with us. And so, and because Palo Alto passed the resolution a little earlier than we did, as Mayor Hamilton touched on, we have organizations in Palo Alto that are chomping at the bit, organizations and individuals who are ready to go, ready to reach out to their counterparts here. So, I'm excited to tell you more about it if you want to know more. I'd just like to say I'd really appreciate your support in this resolution so that we can get forward and start making those connections of the three pillars of community, commerce, and civil discourse, and thanks for your time. their counterparts here. So I, I'm excited to tell you more about it, if you want to know more. I'd just like to say, I'd really appreciate your support in this resolution, so that we can get forward and start making those connections of the, the three pillars of community, commerce, and civil discourse. And thanks for your time tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Howe Fernandez. We will now go to, and if you all don't mind hanging around, we might have some questions for one, or two, or four of you. But we'll now go to council members, if we have any questions of these presenters this evening on Resolution 21-36, our sibling city relationship with the city of Palo Alto, California. Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes, thanks to you all for the presentation, and it seems very encouraging. How many other cities are in the queue, as it were, besides us two? Like, who's waiting on the wings to pair up?
So I can take that first, if you'd like. I hope I'm not out of order.
Oh, please.
So, there are a number of individual cities who have, through, you know, a resident or someone have contacted me since they've become aware of this, but none of them are anywhere near this far along. But there are a few others, I don't know, Mayor DuBois, if you want to talk about some that you've spoken with, that have, have expressed interest as well. So, the idea, though, is that we, as we move forward, we would also try to look to other regions of the country, so that we could make this, you know, truly more national. So, the others have self-identified, but it's preliminary interest only.
Well, I guess I'm wondering is, are they self-selecting, or will sibling cities try to decide what cities to pair with each other?
Self-selecting. The, the three criteria that we use thus far, and honestly, we hope to learn from this pilot. We hope that you will help us figure out the best way to do this, as we iterate it. But the three criteria are simply that the cities be regionally distant, not, at least not in the same state, but hopefully fairly distant across this country, that they're roughly of the same size, and that they want to. So that third one goes to your, your point, council member, that this, this is really something where the cities have to have the, the interest, because it's largely resident-driven, as Mayor Hamilton mentioned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else could speak on that? Okay, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, President Sims. Thanks for the presentation, everyone. What Ms. Venker just was talking about, citizen participation, how does that happen? How does, how do you collect the opinions and interest of citizens in Bloomington and/or Palo Alto, and, and make that part of the initiative?
What, let me, let me comment, and then, and then Ms. Howe Fernandez may want to add, but Councilmember Smith, I, first, we need to let people know about it, which we did with a press release, and, and as you heard, people have started to kind of answer the bell, just kind of show up and say they're interested. I think one of the things that, that Mayor DuBois and I can do over the next few months is really try to encourage that. We've already reached out to institutions like School Corporation, and Ivy Tech, and others that we can, we can help link. But I really do think, we don't know how this, who, who will get most excited and want to get most involved, but that's the key role of the two local coordinators, who will help match those energies and interests within the framework of the city governments that will, you know, we may have an exchange in the first quarter, second quarter next year, but, but it's, it's going to be Ms. Howe Fernandez connecting people with her counterpart in Palo Alto, and we find out what works, what gets people excited and wants to act this way. And if others want to comment, please jump in.
I could just add to that a little bit about the nuts and bolts right now, Mr. Smith. We are, we have a website, we're on LinkedIn, the contact information has been provided in the various press releases, and we've been really impressed at how many people have simply up and emailed us right now about their interest. What we're getting initially is a lot of people saying, I have this expertise, I have this area of interest, I want to help. We're kind of looking at those as our volunteers, and then, we're get, then we're slowly, with a little bit of outreach too, but we need approval before we can be a little more proactive, outreach into the schools and the university and the community at large, to say, what's, you know, what do you want to know? What bugs you? What is your stereotype about this, the, this other place? Can we find you someone to talk to? And then truly, it will be me and my counterpart, Andy, who's here this evening, and we will go through these resources that have emailed us, and our own community contacts, and say, okay, I've got Person A, who, who can we connect them with? Now, as I said, we're working on tools to do this, and so, we hope to have an intake process that makes that a little easier and a little more streamlined. But the personal part of it is, is really fascinating right now, and I'm enjoying that very much, and I think that's one of the important things about it.
Like, thank you, thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. And again, like, we, we did vote on this a couple of weeks ago. We have a steering committee, and Karen's mentioned Andy. But again, like I, like I said, we have some of our groups, like Rotary and Kiwanis, I think are very excited about just connecting at that, at that level. And I think the hope is, if, if this passes tonight, that we'd have some kind of kickoff event potentially in February. And so again, I think we'll just continue to solidify some of these connections. We have, we have a couple of school teachers in Palo Alto that are interested, and we've had other organizations reach out, all probably across spectrum, music, art, gardening, all kinds of things.
Well, thank you all for your responses. You know, the devil's always in the detail, so that's why I asked that kind of question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Did I see your hand up? Councilmember Scamblerie? No. Okay. Any other questions from council members? Okay, seeing now, we'll now go to the public for any public comments on Resolution 21-36, Resolution supporting the establishment of a sibling city relationship with our friends at the city of Palo Alto, California. Ms. Lacy, who do we have this evening?
First, we have Jen Pearl, who should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Ms. Pearl.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Jen Pearl, and I'm president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, the nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in Bloomington here, in growing and attracting quality jobs. Economic development works to create conditions that enable our neighbors to achieve individual and economic potential. At its core, economic development is about people first, and we understand that connections between neighbors and people are at the heart of this initiative. Palo Alto is a hub for tech and innovation, and we've been growing these aspects of our regional economy here. There's an IU alumni presence in the region, which can be a bridge between the cities. We look forward to opportunities for exchange and connection for business and innovation that can benefit both of our communities. We also just wanted to say hello and thank you to the Bloomington team. And Mayor DuBois, we look forward to connecting more with you and Team Palo Alto. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Who do we have next? Ms. Lacy?
Next, we have Greg Alexander, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. I, I honestly, even though I listened to all that, I, I guess I just don't know what, what the point is. I kind of, I don't know if you all will catch this South Park reference, but I feel like it's like step1.com, step 2, question marks, step 3, profit. You know, it's like, somehow by affiliating ourselves with Silicon Valley, we're all going to get rich. I, I don't want that. I'm a computer programmer by trade, so are a lot of my friends, and so when I was a recent college graduate, I visited San Francisco, and Santa Cruz, and Mountain View, and San Jose, and all that stuff a bunch of times, and a lot of my friends moved there. Every last one of those friends, as they became mature, even if they didn't have kids, as they became mature, they, they left the Bay Area, because it just costs so much. It's not a city I want to emulate, it's a city I consciously decided not to move to. And one of the times I went, I took Caltrain, which is a great service, it runs from downtown San Francisco, pretty much, to South Market, all the way down to, I don't know where the Southern Terminus is, but it goes at least through San Jose. And it, you're sitting on the train, and you're looking out the window, and you're looking at people's backyards, you're looking at suburbs, at single-family houses on quarter-acre lots, directly on the train line, and you see the stops, you know, Mountain View, Cupertino, Palo Alto. And the stops are on neighborhood streets, essentially. They, you know, there's, there's this concept called transit-oriented development, where when you have a transit line like Caltrain that, that could connect literally millions of workers to millions of jobs, that you build the apartments right by the train station, but they didn't do that in Palo Alto, they didn't do that in Mountain View, they didn't do that in Cupertino. And when we ask about upzoning here, it's hard to prove, you know, just build more and it becomes affordable, that, that doesn't actually work, because you build more, it does become relatively more affordable, but it's such a desirable place to live, because you built more, that of course, it doesn't, it doesn't become cheap. But Palo Alto exists to prove that if you don't build more, it will become fantastically unaffordable. They have a land area, actually slightly larger than Bloomington, but a population 10,000 people less. I mean, that's, that's like a task fee, you know how many people want to live in Silicon Valley, and they, they literally can't because of the, you know, if you, if you literally have 500 square miles of single-family zoning, which Palo Alto is right in the middle of, you can't have affordable housing. Even people who are making a quarter million dollars a year are finding it very hard to buy a starter home. And I just looked today on Zillow to see what does the real estate market look there, and I found the cheapest, the, the absolute cheapest house on the market in Palo Alto is $500,000. And I, this isn't $500,000, that's a lot more affordable than I expected, so I started looking into it. It's a trailer, $500,000 for a trailer. And so I, I don't think that the city I, I want to have anything to do with, to be honest, is a city that I, I don't like. I look at it as a failure of the American dream. The people who bought into that city 30, 40, 50, 60 years ago are wealthy on their, their land investment, but that's not a place I want to live, that's not a place where the people that work there can live there. And it's not a place that, that can be an effective bedroom community, even for San Francisco. So I don't know what the point is, I don't know what you should do, but I absolutely oppose Palo Alto itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do we have any other public commenters? Ms. Lacy?
There are no other raised hands, and I do not have any chat messages.
Okay, thank you. And seeing now, we'll now go back to council for final comments on Resolution 21-36. Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and then Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes, thank you very much. I think this is a, a relationship that could have positive outcomes for both communities, and I look forward to maybe reaching out to the city council in Palo Alto, and having some conversations with them about problems that both communities face: homelessness, scooters on sidewalks, I don't know if you all have that problem. But certainly, there's a lot we can, we can learn from each other, and kind of pick each other's brains. And I think the, the cultural and social exchanges could also be quite beneficial. So I'm excited that there are already these connections, you know, between the senior communities, the Rotary Clubs, the educational institutions. So I think despite the high cost of living in Palo Alto, I think that this could be a, a great, a great learning experience for both sides. So I appreciate everybody involved in bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Bowlin.
Thank you. I agree with what Councilwoman Piedmont Smith said. I would also point out that I generally tend to look for cities that are more like Bloomington in that they are standalone metropolitan areas, whereas Palo Alto is part of a, a large metropolitan area. But I think that is why we can learn something from them, because, you know, they, they, as part of a larger metropolitan area, there are some things that are different. You know, I'm not going to deny some of the things Mr. Alexander said about the city, it is very expensive. But I mean, you know, in case nobody's checked, there's a nationwide housing crisis, housing is very expensive here as well. I think that all in all, this is a, a good opportunity to learn from a city that is, in fact, comparable to us. As long as we don't mention any certain founding university presidents, I think we'll, we're going to be great. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. Do you have any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none, I'll just chime in. I am excited, and I do support this resolution this evening. I've had the pleasure of speaking with Mayor DuBois, and particularly with Vicky, not as much with Ms. Howe Fernandez, but we have spoken, so I am very excited about this. We are, and I'll just speak for myself, we're in, our goal is not to emulate Palo Alto. That, that to me is not the goal. There's, it's multifaceted. Some of my council colleagues have just mentioned some of those positive connections. One of the things that you may have heard through some of the presentations and discussions, and for full disclosure, I am a member of one of the local Rotary Clubs here in town. And for further transparency, when our club heard of that, that possibility, they have already been in contact with Club, Rotary Clubs in Palo Alto, or at least one, I think there's two in Palo Alto. So there's already made that contact. From a discussion standpoint, and what we can learn from each other, I'm at, I'm looking forward to hearing their philanthropy, and their charity, and what they do to fundraise in order to help those in our communities, much like we do here. Many of you know, we do a lot to support the Teachers Warehouse, to help our teachers, who helps our students. We work with the Salvation Army, Boys and Girls Clubs, do things to support these things that make your community better. It was interesting to hear, and I didn't know this, but it was interesting to hear that Ms. Venker mentioned they have a previous president of NAACP, working with him out there, and I look forward more for that connection. As the previous president of our local Monroe County NAACP, I am very interested in building those connections, those discussions, to talk about what we share amongst the communities on how we help our marginalized populations, how do we work on equity issues, those that are less fortunate than we are. So there's multifaceted avenues of communications that I think we can better each other. So I am very supportive of this, and I look forward to seeing where this relationship will lead us to. So, seeing no further comments, are we ready for the question? Thank you all. Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 20, I'm sorry, Resolution 21-36?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
You're muted. Muted still. Muted still.
If they still, if, if you'd still like to pair with us, yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That resolution is adopted eight, oh, I'm sorry, passes eight zero zero. Thank you again, Mayor Hamilton, Mayor DuBois, Ms. Venker, and Ms. Howe Fernandez. I just want to just call you Karen, whenever I see her on the conference room, so. But thank you all very much for the presentation, look forward to see where this carries us as we move forward. So thank you very, very much for being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you. See you later, Mayor. All right. Take care.
I do believe we have more legislation for second reading. Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that ordinance 21-45 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin? Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that motion passes. It has been moved in second that ordinance 21-45 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 21-45 to amend Title VII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Animals. Regarding amending Chapter 7.01 definitions, Chapter 7.16 Commercial Animal Establishment permits, Chapter 7.54 fees, and Chapter 7.56 enforcement procedure. The synopsis is, ordinance 21-45 is sponsored by Councilmember Sandberg, Piedmont Smith, and Rallo, and would amend portions of Title VII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Animals. The ordinance makes the following changes. It revises BMC Section 7.01.010 to add, remove, and revise various defined terms. It revises BMC Section 7.16.040 to remove the requirement that the breeder's name be posted on the animal's kennel. It removes BMC Section 7.16.0545 in its entirety. It revises BMC Section 7.54.030 to make the commercial animal establishment fee for pet shops $250. It adds BMC Section 7.16.070, which prohibits the sale of dogs and cats by pet shops. It revises BMC Section 7.56.030 to add a penalty for the sale of dogs or cats by a pet shop. And there was a committee of the whole recommendation of due pass 702.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Scamblery.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 21-45 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have a specific order in which we'll present our sponsors this evening? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and also Councilmember Rallo or Councilmember Sandberg, whenever you're ready after that, if you choose. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, please proceed. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, President Sims. I will just run through slightly revised PowerPoint. But it's largely the same as what we had last week, so I will go relatively quickly if I can share my screen. Okay. All right, so ordinance 2145 revises Title VII and addresses the problem of inhumane conditions in which many kittens and puppies are raised and bred, and dogs and cats are bred. And the problem is that many cats and dogs that are sold in pet shops often are sourced from puppy or kitten mills where conditions are inhumane. And this is often not clear to customers of pet shops and sometimes due to kind of the subterfuge of the puppy mill owners, it, it may not even be clear to the pet shops themselves. We do have current regulations about consumer protection requirements. But they are not really comprehensive enough to prevent the sale of unhealthy animals that may come from puppy mills because many times the puppies and kittens that come from such sources end up having medical problems. So the regulations that we currently have are insufficient to catch those issues. There is no verification of the humane conditions of breeding also on how the mothers are treated. Federal and state protections of, for the breeding of animals are really just very minimal, just enough to keep them alive and not to have a quality of life. And finally, this is something I added to the presentation since last time. We have too many cats and dogs already that are in our animal shelters, in our rescue organizations that need good homes. So this is another way to make sure that the animals that we already have locally and through rescues find good homes rather than people buying them from pet shops. So, so far 415 localities nationwide have created ordinances such as this, past ordinances like this one today in order to ban the sale of cats and dogs at pet shops. And there are thousands of pet shops that are successful in their business model without the sale of animals or specifically without the sale of cats and dogs. Many local pet shops, many pet shops throughout the country and some local ones like TNT, Petco, and PetSmart find a lot of success in hosting animals for adoption from a rescue organization or from the shelter. And then, of course, the person that adopt, the family that adopts the animal will buy their supplies and pet food at the shop. And so many pet shops find a successful business model in that way. And the Humane Society of the US does assist with some of that transition. So the ordinance itself, the summary that Chief Deputy Clerk McDowell read was pretty comprehensive, but just to go through it again, we have some definitions defining what an animal rescue organization is, eliminating minor versus major pet shop. Because it used to be major pet shop are the ones that sold cats and dogs and minor did not, and now there's not any need for that distinction, clarifying what it means to sell and clarifying what a person is in this context. So we further sections nine through 13 in the ordinance remove the requirement to post the name of the breeder since there won't be cats and dogs for sale. So there's no reason for that section. Again, we have the minor major pet shop distinction that we no longer need. We don't need the consumer protection requirements for dog and cat sales since they will no longer take place. And one fee for registering a pet shop will be, you know, consolidated into one fee, minor or major, any pet shop will be licensed for $250. Then the final section is probably the most significant, Section 14 adds to our municipal code that the sale of dogs and cats by pet shops is prohibited. It still allows space to show animals that are available for adoption by a different entity, a rescue organization or an animal shelter. And then the, the final clause adds a penalty of $500 per violation. We do have an extended effective date for this ordinance, so over a year time for the two pet shops affected to, to adapt their business model. January 1st, 2023 is the effective date of this ordinance. And enforcement as always will be complaint based. That our Department of Animal Care and Control would be the entity that would check on compliance cases. And that is it. And there's a happy big fat kitty to end our presentation on. And let me stop share. Here we go.
Thank you for your presentation, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Did Councilmember Rallo or Sandberg care to add anything? Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. As we did in the Committee of the Whole discussion, I would like to call on Samantha Morton to give a similar context report as she did previously. Samantha Morton, of course, is with the Humane Society and she is here with us this evening. If we could recognize her or some brief comments.
Is she on? Hello, Ms. Morton.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. I want to first and foremost thank the ordinance sponsors, Councilmember Sandberg, Piedmont Smith, and Rallo for championing, championing this ordinance this evening. I wanted to just provide a little bit of context on this issue here nationally and then within the state of Indiana. So as Councilmember Piedmont Smith noted so eloquently in her presentation, there's been over 400 localities that have passed ordinances across the country showing this nationwide trend that would move us toward more humane sourcing of animals. In addition to that, there's been five states that have passed state laws that have prohibited the sale of cats and dogs in pet stores, most notably and recently in Washington State and in the state of Illinois. And the really important reason why that's relevant here in the state of Indiana is with Illinois being our neighbor. We have seen in the recent months, especially in Northwest Indiana, several puppy selling pet stores opening up in areas of the region, specifically in Sherrville, Portage, and Hammond as well. And so we know that where there are communities that are, that do not have ordinances that prohibit these sales. We are seeing increased puppy selling pet stores coming over the border from Illinois. So we see that as problematic and we, we believe that there will be even more stores that come into the state of Indiana before the February 2022 effective date. I also wanted to just talk briefly a little bit about the distinction between a puppy and a kitten mill. I know that was a question that had come up before. And so generally speaking, puppy and kitten mills are large commercial operations where the health and the wellness, physical and mental health of the animal is put below the profit of the, of those animals being sold. Oftentimes you'll see stacked cages and the animals are not getting the adequate exercise and enrichment that you would give to a family member that's a pet of your own. We typically don't see kitten mills as prevalently as puppy mills just because there tend to be just fewer demand for very expensive cats. But it is something that we still do see and that is why cats are also included in this ordinance. I really appreciate your consideration of this ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions that might arise this evening and just want to thank you again for all of your time.
Thank you for your input, Ms. Morton. Just Councilmember Rallo.
Well, just checking to say.
No, I said, I was just checking.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, I, I appreciate that. Just to say that I think that this is very important, not only for Bloomington, but I think for the larger effort, which was already noted that already a number of cities in Indiana have similar laws. St. Joseph County has this similar ordinance and hopefully we will move the entire state to act like Illinois has and Washington State to, to follow suit. So it begins at the local level and I'm optimistic that it'll continue across the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg.
And just to tag on to that, this got started by constituents contacting us. This has been a community concern for a number of years, and I think a lot of people are urging us to bring this forward given some of the changes that we're seeing elsewhere in our desire to cut down on the puppy mills. We are also starting to hear more about backyard breeders from things that we have been told, both anecdotally and from the experts that we've contacted. Responsible breeders typically do not want to sell to a retail establishment. And so with respect to people's choices, and this we hear a lot from the emails that we've received, anyone who wants to purchase a specific breed, that is not, this, this ordinance will not prevent anyone from working with a breeder for a specific kind of dog that they wish to purchase or, or cats, which may not be as common. So we want to be clear, this is not about us trying to eliminate people's choices, but it is our attempt to try to eliminate the puppy mills and who they are working with in order to get these animals in the hands of people without proper vetting, which responsible breeders certainly wish to do. So again, giving our current pet shops a year to come into compliance and to adjust their business plan, we think is more than fair. And anything you do like this is going to be controversial. You're going to have pros, you're going to have cons. But the vast majority of people who have certainly reached out to us and urged us to initiate this certainly think the time is now to prohibit the sale of dogs and cats in our pet shops. Thank you. Eager to hear from the public.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. We will now go to the council members if we have any council comments. I'm sorry, council member questions. Okay, see, Councilmember Scamblery.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for the presentation and to Ms. Morton for being with us. I'm not sure who to direct this question to, perhaps Ms. Morton. Can you comment? One of the concerns I have is kind of regarding the on-ramp for a new business model. It seems to me like a year is an appropriate, a reasonable amount of time to transition to a new model. But I don't own a pet shop, so I don't know that. But I was wondering if any of you could comment on that length of time, what you've seen in other cities that allowed less time or more time or, if you could just comment on it, that would be helpful to me.
Go ahead, Ms. Morton. Let's see your hands up. You're okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'm, I'm happy to answer that question, Councilwoman. So basically, we've seen a variety of implementation dates, usually between six months to one year is a typical transition period for businesses to convert their model. Businesses that especially offer grooming services, nutrition, counseling, food and supplies have a really, a much easier time transitioning their model because we know that that business model is successful. In fact, the most successful pet stores across the country, including Petco, PetSmart, and a variety of other local businesses do very well and tap into that $103 billion industry that relates to pet services and supplies. So we know that a year is, should be sufficient enough time for stores to take a look at that model and find a way to be profitable moving forward.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I have one more question, but I could wait till next round. So.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the fellow council members? Okay, seeing none, Councilmember Scambler, please proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate the comment and the, the notion that enforcement of this would be complaint based. Could you, I think this is perhaps directed to Councilmember Sandberg, could you say more about exactly how that would work? What would, what would that, what would happen? What would a, a person experience? What would a store experience?
Well, once again, this would be the responsibility of our Animal Care and Control Department. If a report is made that a pet shop is indeed against this prohibition, selling an animal, selling a dog or a cat, then they would be the proper, proper place to, to launch that investigation and determine if a violation has occurred. And then, of course, you see, we have the fines in place. So once again, though, we would hope that that would not become an issue in the ample time that we're giving pet shops to adjust their business models. We would hope that there would not be any, any case reported of, of a pet shop selling against the, the local ordinance. But again, that would be up to our wonderful Animal Care and Control Department to provide the enforcement and the investigations.
And I'm not hearing that it would require the creation of a new division within Animal Care and Control or a new sophisticated reporting procedure. It seems like just a report. Am I understanding that correctly, that it would just be a complaint or a report from an individual and then that triggers the investigation?
Correct. And again, this has been very carefully vetted locally with our Animal Care and Control professionals, including they, their, their board, who is in full support of this.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to public for a public comment on ordinance 21-45. Please, if you intend to speak publicly, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. You can get there by using the participants button or the reactions button or the more buttons at the bottom of your screen. If you have a mobile device or a phone, you could reach us by star nine. And if none of those And if none of those work, you can please send a note to our meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Miss Lacy, do we have any takers this evening?
There are presently six raised hands. Council President Sims, is five minutes the appropriate time?
Yes, I think, I think we'll leave it as such. Hopefully, most won't need that much time.
Okay, and then I would, I would ask members of the public wishing to comment, if there's more than one commenter on your device, if you could let us know that at the beginning, and then we'll take that second comment, I think, in line, just right behind the the first commenter on the device. The person with the screen name Stephanie O. should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
I sure can. Can you identify yourself?
Yeah, my name is Stephanie. I've lived in town since two thousand and eight. And I participated, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. May I have your last name as well?
Oh, Stephanie Oi.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Oi. Please proceed.
Sorry, as I was saying, I've lived here since two thousand and eight, and I've participated in multiple rescue efforts. I'm a volunteer foster at the shelter. And I just wanted to say that I am in full support of this ordinance. And I would just like to say that if you are against the ordinance, I would actually highly encourage that you take the time to participate in either a rescue or a shelter setting where they have like open volunteers and stuff, just to kind of dip your feet and to get experience on what the rescue effort is like. Because Indiana especially has a really bad backyard breeder puppy mill problem. And as I've worked with, you know, five or six different rescues from Indianapolis and around the surrounding area, just finding homes for a lot of these animals is such a strenuous effort. And it puts such an emotional toll on the people who work in these sectors that just to have that experience would give you a new perspective if you are against this ordinance at all. Because a lot of times, you know, you have to have the experience in order to understand the problem that we are having. And a lot of it, you know, needs to be on a local level in order to try to reach at the bigger problem. Because I understand that we don't have the necessary resources to shut down these puppy mills or these backyard breeders. But we can try to ensure that our public and our local community is more aware and also be able to, I guess, have some semblance of control over the people who are, you know, abusing these animals. And I'm just, you know, spending one day at a, you know, at a shelter or going to a rescue function, you know, you can see so many of these animals come from these abusive situations. And just, you know, interacting with them, learning about their backgrounds and stuff really does make you look at the world differently. And it really makes it more real. So if you've never had that experience, I would highly recommend joining one of these efforts because not only will it enrich your life, it'll also give you more of a insight onto what people like us deal with on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Oi. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next is Thomas Thompson, who should be able to unmute.
All right, what do you want?
Yes, can you hear me now?
I sure can. Can you identify yourself? You have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Thomas Thompson. And in full disclosure, I've worked with Delilah's pet shop for almost eight years. Now, I believe that a very possible solution to the problems of both unhealthy, unethical pet shops and the abominable puppy mills would be to enforce the laws and ordinances we already have in place in our community. Now, licensing by the city of Bloomington with unannounced inspections of shops could also prove a just solution, I think, and a small revenue source for the city. Violations would result in the cancellation of that license and would forbid their sale of live animals. Case closed. This would only affect violators and would allow pet shops that do not violate their license to continue serving our community. I give you my word that there are quality pet shops selling puppies from reputable breeders who only want to encourage and promote the breed of the dog they love. Of course, since most of you don't know me, don't take my word for that. Just do what makes sense and will allow all involved to receive justice. Oh, one last thing. At Delilah's, we serve a large section of this community, finding good homes for our babies, selling the best food with explanations as to why a food is good for a specific pet and helping pet owners with both dietary and behavioral issues. We have a vet tech on staff for emergencies, of course. Our store motto is, we don't just sell, we educate. I'm proud of our service to our neighbors. Well, as a fifty-year resident of Bloomington, I trust you all will do the right thing for every animal and everyone involved. Thanks for your time and your hard work on this, as well as your attention. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Thompson. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next is Malcolm Abrams, who should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can. How are you this evening?
Good. Do you want to see me? How do you do that?
No, we want you to identify yourself, then you'll have five minutes.
Okay, I'm Malcolm Abrams.
I said that too, so I always want to see you, Mr. Abrams, but not during this meeting, sorry. You have five minutes. Go ahead.
You know, in addition to the deplorable conditions in puppy mills, you know, I think, matter of fact, I know that sometimes the stores may not know what they're selling. And the people who purchase puppies may not know what they're getting. My sister-in-law, who was a hard-working nurse in this community, a few years ago, purchased a dog at one of our local pet stores for her two kids. She has a small home. They wanted a very small dog, probably about ten pounds maximum. They paid five hundred dollars for a puppy that in fact was very, very small as a puppy. But six months later, the dog weighed forty pounds. They, the reason that they went to a pet store to begin with was because at the local animal shelter, they could not find a small dog. I know that they are always in great demand. Anyway, the dog grew to be forty pounds. It was not a purebred dog, which wasn't important to them. But I assume that most pet shops that sell animals are selling purebred supposedly. It was in ill health, and it was the most neurotic animal, the most neurotic dog I've ever seen. It was afraid of everything. They paid five hundred dollars for what they thought they were getting was a small dog. Now, you know, I think it's entirely possible that the pet shop, because it is a well-known one in this town, it's possible that they didn't know what they were selling. And and certainly, my sister-in-law got a surprise at what she brought home. So I think it's another factor why we don't really need, outside of the suffering of animals, which is deplorable, you know, there are other repercussions as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next is Kalen Snodgrass, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
I sure can. Can you identify yourself? You have about five minutes if you choose.
My name is Kalen Snodgrass, and I just wanted to add a quick comment. I've lived in Bloomington since about two thousand and fifteen, and I'm a current pet mom of three pets, all of which have been rescued from animal rescues and local animal shelters. And I just wanted to add that I don't, I I support this ordinance because I don't feel that we should allow the sale of puppies and kittens and things like that and pet shops, as there's plenty of local resources to adopt animals that are in great need from.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Snodgrass. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next is Kathy Egan, who should be able to unmute.
Hello, are you there? I have to unmute yourself again, Ms. Egan. All right, can you hear me? Hello? Okay, Ms. Lacy, if it's okay, if we can circle back and get her, that'd be good. Who do we have next?
Next is Donna Dayton, who should be able to unmute.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Donna Dayton, and I wanted to speak in support of this ordinance twenty-one forty-five. There's already been a lot of reasons presented why this is important. One thing I wanted to add was that this also provides protection to the consumer. Because a lot of times, the the dogs and cats in the pet store window or whatever are very attractive, especially to young college students who may have been living for the first time on their own. And they think, wow, this would be great addition to my household. And it's sort of an impulse buy. They're not given the education. They need to actually take care of that pet. And it's not really unusual for a student to quickly realize they're weighing over their head with the care and expense. And those pets may end up back at the shelter because of that. And so my hope is that the local pet stores will eventually embrace the business model that's been so successful with other retailers. And it sounds like Delilah's is already pretty close to that. I think their business will be fine because they do a lot of that already. And just to not sell the dogs and cats in our store, I don't think will hurt them overly. So another thing I wanted to say that sometimes you just get very overwhelmed by all the horrific stories of conditions in puppy and kitten mills. And it's just such an enormous problem that it can seem sometimes like this ordinance that only applies to two pet stores might have little impact. But passing this ordinance sends a very strong message that our community cares and will not support the inhumane sourcing of puppies and kittens. And it also serves as a model for other communities who are considering similar ordinances. Your consideration is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Dayton. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next is Allison Jacobs, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Allison Jacobs. I have two degrees from Indiana University with an ethics concentration. I'm a lifelong Bloomington resident. Some of you know me from a local five oh one C three. I rescue, I co-founded and sit as the board secretary, Manor and Mutt's Rescue. Some of you know me as one of the owners of Scout's Honor, Bloomington's newest pet resort located in downtown Bloomington. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of Manor and Mutt's Rescue. Over the past two years, our rescue has taken in several dogs that were purchased from Anthony's Pets and Delilah's. In the past six months, our rescue has taken in two dogs originally purchased from Delilah's. The owners who purchased these dogs from these pet stores would have never passed our adoption criteria or the adoption criteria from an ethical breeder. I cannot speak for the animal shelter, but I doubt they would pass their adoption criteria as well. Pet stores that sell animals are contributing to the homeless population of animals in Bloomington. As a lifelong Bloomingtonian, I know how important Delilah's pet shop is to the community. Delilah, the Saint Bernard inspired my family to raise Saint Bernard's Ruby and Pearl when my sister and I were children. I loved Delilah just like I loved Ruby and Pearl. My dad's office was next to the original Delilah's location. When I went to work with him, he would take me in to say hi to Delilah. Just because a business has been around for many years and things have been done the same way for many years doesn't mean that they should be impervious to change. It deeply concerned me that Delilah's openly admitted to purchasing dogs from backyard breeders during the last city council meeting, meaning those whom have accidental litters without doing genetic or temperament testing on the parents. I empathize with the owners of Delilah's, and I hope they use the resources available to adopt to an ethical business model. Delilah sells mutts with designer names at a premium. Pickles, my current foster dog that was purchased from Delilah's three years ago, was listed as a teddy bear breed. This is not a breed of dog. Pickles is a Bichon mix with bad teeth as a result of poor genetics. Other designer breeds Delilah's has listed on their Facebook right now are Minidoodles, a Chihuahua Pug mix, and a Yorkie Dachshund mix. We believe in adopting or shopping responsibly. You cannot purchase an animal from a pet shop responsibly. Ethical breeders do not give their dogs to pet stores to sell. Ethical breeders interview applicants to ensure the best fit for each dog. Ethical breeders have lifelong contracts with the adopter stating if the adopter can no longer care for the purchased dog, the dog is to be returned to them so the breeder can find them the right home. Thank you for letting me speak.
Welcome. Thank you for your comments this evening. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next is Robert Starkey, who should be able to unmute.
I, my name is Bob Starkey, and I am a council member here in Dyer, Indiana, up here in Lake County. We were the first community in Lake County, Indiana's second most populous county, to pass a, a ban, much like you guys are considering tonight. I would first offer, I, I, I don't want to say expertise, but since I've already been been through this process, you know, we, we spent a lot of time going back and forth deciding, you know, as a, as a body of government, what is our, what is our role in the business community? And while we all agreed we weren't here to pick winners and losers, we also recognize that there are some operations that we should have a say in. And, you know, having these industries where you have puppy mills and kitten mills, we also included rabbits in our ordinance. You know, churning out in an inhumane fashion animals at, at the prices that, that they were getting for profit. We, we knew that was something we didn't want in our community. The big push we had was with the ban in Illinois to get to Sherrville, which was mentioned earlier, that you have to drive through our town. A quarter of our town borders Illinois. We have Route thirty, which is the crossroads of America, come right to our town. So we have some prime real estate. And we thought, you know, before we get into a spot where, much like you are now, where you have some of these established businesses in town, places like Portage, Hammond, Sherrville, to kind of nip that in the bud, we said, we need to pass this now because we don't want to be put in a situation where we have to decide, you know, what businesses in our community are, are we going to, you know, not allow from here on out? So, so we, we did, we had a lot of conversations about, you know, variances to the ordinances, grandfather clause, a whole bunch of things that, you know, we looked at, but I, I, I would encourage you to take a look at this and pass this, if only because if you, if, if, if everyone had to take a hard look and say, hey, we've got these businesses in our community that we're not really comfortable with, now is the perfect time to act rather than waiting for several years down the road when, you know, at that point, you're just kicking the can down the road. So I, I would offer, you know, any, any thoughts that I would have to any of the council members. I know this is just a public comment, and I'm sure you have more people that want to talk. But, but if anybody has any questions that you may have, we may have tabletopd that already. So that's all I, I want to say. I just wanted to, to log in here and, you know, let you know there's other council members across Indiana who have been where you are at tonight at this very minute. And we got through it. And the anxiety of the timer that says one thirty-seven, one thirty-six is getting to me. So I'll leave that be. If you have any questions, give me a holler.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Starkey. Maybe you guys need to get a timer too and get used to that. Don't feel the pressure. Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Let's circle back to Kathy Egan. She should be able to unmute.
Hi, Ms. Egan. Can you hear us?
Ms. Egan, are you able to unmute? Okay, we'll go, we'll move on. Okay, we'll move on then for the moment. Next is the person with the screen name, Ms. Shaw, who should be able to unmute and state their name for the record.
Hi, I'm sorry I couldn't change my name as a participant. This is Misty Shaw, spelled S-H-A-W. I've lived in Bloomington since 2009. I live on North Kinzer Pike. I'm in Sue's district. And I'm not affiliated with any pet organizations or anything like that. I think I'm just like a regular citizen who loves my dogs. I support this ordinance because, as Susan mentioned earlier, this doesn't prevent anybody from choosing a particular breed. I love my shelter dogs, but I also love my poodle, my toy poodle, who was gotten from a reputable breeder. And no one is preventing, no one is being prevented from seeking out a specific breed. I understand that that's less convenient to have to research breeders and getting to touch with them and talk with them and to try to acquire a pet that way. But I don't think that anybody is entitled to walk into a store and buy whatever pet that they want either. I don't, I don't think any of us are entitled to simply make a convenient life choice like that. If it's a little bit harder to get a specific breed from a reputable breeder, I think that's fine, and I think that's the way that it should be. And so mostly, I just wanted you to be able to hear from somebody who lives here who just, I guess, I'm a regular person who thinks that we shouldn't have dogs and cats being sold in stores. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next is Ann Sterling, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you so much. So my name is Ann Sterling. I'm a Bloomington resident, and I live in the Sycamore Knolls neighborhood. So I'm also here to speak in support of ordinance 2145. And I want to thank council members Sandberg, Piedmont Smith, and Rallo for sponsoring this legislation. I don't really have anything else to add to everything other folks have already said. I'm just very grateful for you all for your leadership in bringing this legislation up and trying to help do what we can here in Bloomington to address the state's considerable puppy mill issue. Taking this action will help dogs throughout Indiana, and it's something Bloomington can do to make sure that we are not part of the supply chain for puppy mills in Indiana. And just as a final note, I will say it's exciting that we have a sister city in California. And just as a reminder, California actually passed a ban on the sale of puppies from pet stores in 2017. So I urge Bloomington to follow in their footsteps by passing ordinance 2145. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sterling, for joining us and for your comments. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next, we have a person with the screen name Allison, who should be able to unmute and state their name for the record.
Yes, hello. This is Allison Zuck. Can y'all hear me?
Sure can.
Fantastic. Hello. I am in District 2, and I am the owner of The Ranch Cat Rescue. I, you know, thank everybody for voicing all of their support tonight, you know, to all the council members who supported us on the last round. You know, I really hope that you're able to continue to do so tonight. You know, folks have made some really compelling arguments. And I just want to say, you know, again, I'm well in support of this. You know, as a rescue, I pull cats and kittens from terrible conditions, you know, not unlike how some of them are in mills. And in the cat world, you know, again, I just want to say there are so many cats. We're in no shortage. You know, rescues need help placing them. Shelters need help placing them. You know, in the groups that I'm involved with, the biggest callouts for help that I see are, you know, shelters that are overwhelmed, you know, again, primarily with cats and kittens, that need other rescue groups to pull them so they don't have to, you know, be forced to euthanize perfectly healthy cats just because there's too many for the spaces that we have. So I would love the opportunity as a rescue to help educate new owners about how to give their cats the best lives, about how to help, you know, kind of offset these terrible numbers in the cat world. And, you know, again, making sure that the animals that are going into the hands of the public, they have a history of them, you know, they know their vaccination records. They know that they're spayed and neutered. They know that, you know, there's somebody they can rely on if they have questions. You know, that helps keep animals out of shelters and keep those numbers low. And, you know, again, I just, there's so many reasons. You know, I hope local businesses will be able to adapt and will be able to work with us like so many others, you know, have across the, you know, state and country. But, you know, thanks, everybody, for listening to a bunch of crazy animal folks and for supporting us. And I will hope you continue to do so with your yes vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next is Julie Gray, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, my name is Julie Gray. I am a local animal lover and volunteer. I've volunteered for many years at our wonderful, wonderful, wonderful Bloomington Animal Shelter. And I am so happy to be here tonight because I think you've had a chance to hear how widespread the community support for this ordinance is. Bloomington is a city of animal lovers. We want the best for our animals. And we also want the best for our local businesses. We want them to flourish, but we want them to flourish in conjunction and in alliance with our community values. We're not trying to punish anyone. We're trying to help businesses align with our care for animals. There is so much evidence that pet stores across the country can do a booming business in the sale of pet supplies and services without having to sell animals. And in fact, they, I think that our local pet stores may discover, they'll tap into a whole new market of people who will be delighted to shop there now that the stores do not sell animals, which so many of us do not want to support. We have so many animals in our country, in our state, that need homes. We have very responsible breeders who bring up dogs and cats in their homes, meet with prospective owners, educate those owners. Those are the kinds of people we want to support. Those are the kinds of people we want to acquire our animals from. This ordinance does that. Yay for this ordinance vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And before we move a little, move forward, I'd like to remind the public that you, if you intend to have public comment, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. And you can reach us there through the participants button, the reactions button, or the more buttons at the bottom of the screen. If you have a mobile device or a phone, you can reach us through star nine. And if neither of those work, you can send a note to the meeting host via the chat function on Zoom. Ms. Lacy, who do we have next?
I see Rachel DeGregorio, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, my name is Rachel DeGregorio. I'm a Bloomington resident for 20 years and board chair of Silver Linings Rescue. I would just like to thank, you know, everybody, all the council members, Susan, Isabel, and Dave, for, you know, sponsoring this and the community for coming together. And I think, you know, we have all heard some really powerful testimony tonight. And I just hope, you know, I'm here to voice my support, obviously, and hope that you guys make the right decision. I believe that you have the best interest of the animals in this community in your minds. And that's it. I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else waiting, Ms. Lacy?
Kathy Egan has joined again. If we could go to her. She should be able to unmute.
Hello, Ms. Egan. How are you? Are you able to unmute, Ms. Egan?
I'm able to see that her microphone is unmuted, but there must be something related to the microphone she's using.
Okay.
We have another public comment with the screen name TNT Pet. If you'd like me to go to that one?
Yes, please.
They should be able to unmute and state their name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sarah Howell, and I manage TNT Pet Food. I want to speak in support of ordinance 2145 tonight. TNT pet food is proof that an independent pet food retailer can be adequately supported by our community without the sale of pets. For over 50 years, TNT has been thriving without selling any pets. If you've not been into TNT, you may not be aware of our store's focus. But it's important to outline that we exist solely on the revenue of pet food sales, pet supplies, and some wild bird products. And our community has utilized TNT as a resource as they navigate their questions of pet food diets, training, grooming tools, supplements, and pet waste management. Tonight, it's important to bring up the fact that there are over 400 brands of pet food in distribution. This is cat and dog food and treats. We, as a retailer, can only carry a handful of brands to support and sell. Every day, we receive calls and customers requesting products that we do not carry. I can confidently say pet parents are more brand and size-specific than human parents. There's still a large market availability for pet food and supplies in Bloomington. And this can be successfully done without the sale of animals in your store. And lastly, I think it's important to touch on the fact that although the facade of a pet store, selling animals can appear friendly, clean, caring, and of adequate standard for a pet, I urge you to remember that the background of where these animals have come from is not what you're seeing. Only puppy mills sell to pet stores. Responsible breeders have standards and will meet the families that they are selling to. Puppy mills are specifically focused on profit. They churn out animals as quickly as possible, sacrificing standards and pet safety. Puppy mills and pet stores are greatly benefiting from the mixed breed crazes that our society has shifted to. Labradoodles, cockapoos, cavapoos, schnoodles, et cetera. Remember, as we go through this tonight, that selling pets is not the important element here. Pet food and supplies can allow a pet store thrive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Lacy, is Ms. Egan still, is there an opportunity still? I don't see her any further.
She is in the chat. I can see if she can unmute now. Let's see. Ms. Egan, are you able to unmute?
I am muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yay. Sorry. So sorry. I don't know what's the matter with my computer.
That's okay. Well, welcome. You have five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, council members. My name is Kathy Egan, and I'm the founder and director of the K-Nine Express Transport Project, a 501(c)(3) organization that moves South Central Indiana sheltered dogs and cats to receiving sheltered partners in New England, Northern Ohio, Northwest Illinois, and Northern Indiana, where there's a need for well-socialized, healthy dogs and cats because of their public's embrace of spaying and neutering their companion animals, which has greatly reduced their overpopulation problem. Their communities also embrace the adoption of companion animals from shelters and rescue groups. This is the 18th year of our project, and we transported over 13,000 sheltered dogs and over 800 sheltered cats from South Central Indiana shelters to lower euthanasia rates of shelter animals. I've had every breed and age of dog or cat onboard the transport. Simply stated, there is no shortage of companion animals in our state. I'd like to make three points. Point one, yesterday, my day began at 6:30 a.m. when I came to Bloomington to pick up 17 sheltered dogs and 14 sheltered cats from our sending sheltered partners. And I transported them to Hobart Humane Society in Northern Indiana, where they were equipped, where they will be quickly adopted. My day on the road ended at 8 o'clock PM last night. This is a typical transport day, except for over 15 years when I transported to New England shelters, which is a 2,100-mile trip over three days. Point two, the state of Indiana saw the need to pass the spay-neuter law, which took effect this past July. This law, designed to reduce overpopulation of companion animals and which took seven years to pass, requires shelters and rescue groups to spay and neuter their sheltered pets prior to adoption. Point three, Pets Alive Spay-Neuter Clinic in Bloomington and low-cost spay-neuter clinics around our state have all had their surgery appointments filled with up to a four-week waiting period. This is because the public's need to alter their pets and the need of shelters and rescue groups to comply with the Indiana law. All of our work as a state to end euthanasia of shelter animals will be for naught as long as pet stores are selling puppies and dogs purchased from puppy mills and backyard breeders. I urge all pet stores to work with shelters and rescue groups to provide adoption of shelter animals in their store, and they still allow them to sell quality pet food and pet paraphernalia to keep these animals healthy. I urge council members to approve this important ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mrs. Lacy?
No, there are no other requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. And seeing none, we'll now go to council members for final comments on ordinance 21-45. Okay, seeing Councilmember Sandberg. And then Councilmember Kimbler, I'm sorry.
I certainly appreciate the public comments this evening, all the emails we've received. And again, thanks to Heather Lacy, our wonderful staff, who assisted us all throughout the vetting and the research for this, all the experts who have come to the table to help us with this. And I feel it is the right thing to do in Bloomington. And I would ask for everyone's positive support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kimbler.
Yes, thank you. This has been a really interesting discussion for me. This, in thinking about my vote, I, this started out to be kind of an easy question, and then it got a lot harder, and then it kind of got easier again. Just by way of background, I've heard from and had conversations with a few dozen constituents from District 2 that I represent and from many outside of District 2. I've also visited the two pet stores that would be most affected by this, Anthony's in College Mall and Delilah's as well. And I appreciate the time that staff in those two places spent with me. It was very helpful. I am struck by the qualitative difference in my experience at each of those two establishments, and I do want to acknowledge that. So how did I think about this? I do think the ethics of commerce, particularly with live animals, was kind of central to my thinking about this. I appreciate Dier Town Councilmember Starkey's comments that council should not necessarily be in the business of picking winners and losers. But we do have a role in ensuring that commerce is conducted in a way consistent with community values. And I appreciate him saying in a much more articulate way what I've been trying to kind of formulate in my own head. I also want to acknowledge Ms. Howell for her comments on, from TNT Pet, for her comments on how business models can work without the sale of live animals. Because as I, just as I looked at the ethics of commerce, the other thing I looked at is what we do to promote and strengthen local businesses. And I take that very, very seriously. And both of these businesses, both of the businesses that are affected by this are locally owned, and I acknowledge that. So that was very helpful to hear that model as well. It's been said that, well, we can't, you know, we don't have the power with anything we do to shut down puppy mills. They will perpetuate no matter what. Maybe that's true, but we can help reduce demand, and I think that's worth trying. And I'm pleased to support this ordinance, and I thank the sponsors for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Kimbler. Councilmember Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciated hearing also from Councilmember Starkey from Dire. I'm disappointed to know that, I had noticed that Dire was one of the cities in the state that had passed such an ordinance and several other towns, including Sherrville, had, have yet to. That's a real disappointment to me, than being on the border with Illinois. But I think that any doubt I had about this ordinance was erased when I heard the comments of Ms. Allison Jacobs. So I'll be supporting this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowden. Do we have any other comments, final comments from council members? Councilmember Pete Moss Smith.
Yes, I'd like to thank Julie Gray for her advocacy on this issue and Samantha Morton for her expertise, and my council colleagues for co-sponsoring, and also Heather Lacy again for her expertise in drafting legislation. I did want to address one question that Councilmember Flaherty raised at the committee discussion, which is, you know, will this action actually reduce actually have an impact on puppy mills? And so I reached out to Elizabeth Oric, who we heard from last time. She is the national manager of Puppy Mill Initiatives with Best Friends, an organization, nonprofit. And I asked her, do you have any data that humane pet store ordinances such as this actually lead to a decline in activity of puppy or kitten mills? And I just wanted to share the response that I received from her. She says it's a little challenging because we can't credit shelter intake reduction specifically and solely to a local or state ordinances, since these are not standalone factors. Even though we know that places like Albuquerque, Los Angeles, and other jurisdictions have shown significant life-saving improvement after enacting ordinances, we can't really attribute that only to the ordinances, since other factors may have contributed. Fortunately, there are enough merits to these efforts, and we have enough compelling data in other areas to give the ordinances credibility. What we do know is that it's a simple economic equation. Shrinking the market for these animals to be sold, the demand reduces the need for the mills, the supply, to produce those animals. And since the ordinances started getting passed, the number of USDA licensed puppy mills has decreased by several thousand. And the ordinance is the only way to shut off the pipeline of out-of-state puppy mills importing animals into Bloomington to be sold in local pet stores. And not doing so will open the doors for more puppy mill supplied stores to open up in Bloomington as surrounding areas or states such as Illinois enact their own laws. So even though there's no cut and dried, you know, this place enacted laws, therefore this puppy mill will shut down. There is some, since this movement of a humane pet store ordinances has gotten underway, there have been, has been a decrease in the number of puppy mills. And as Ms. Oric says, it's, you know, reducing the demand for the supply of puppies and kittens just logically will have a positive impact as far as reducing the, the number of animals in those inhumane conditions. So anyway, I wanted to share that. I know Mr. Flaherty's not here tonight, but I wanted to address that, that question from last time. And I hope that this ordinance passes. I think it's the best thing for our community and our friends and the other animal mammal groups that we know and love. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other final comments from council members? Okay, seeing none, are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll for ordinance 21-45?
Member Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Campbell Larry?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 21-45 is adopted nine zero zero. Thanks to our colleagues for bringing this and our community for their public comments this evening. Okay, we will now move down to additional public comment, where a minute of twenty-five minutes is set aside for this section. I will remind those who may have an interest in speaking that you may speak on matters of community concern not listed on our agenda this evening. And you may speak in this period, and obviously not both, and you will be allowed five minutes. So do we have Councilmember Pete Moss Smith?
So sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
I just, I just wanted to clarify that the vote on ordinance 2145 was actually eight zero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eight zero zero.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You're absolutely correct. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Ms. Lacy, do we have any public comments?
Any raised hands? But I had a message in the chat from Sam Dove, who asked me to read the message. It says, "Hi, council. I sell our chicken. They keep died from hawk or danger. They need friends. I just rid them."
Okay.
And I do not have any other chat messages, nor do I see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to matters dealing with council schedule. I think the first thing that we should address, with no objections, this council supported moving ordinance 21-46 by skipping the committee meeting next week and moving it directly to the December fifteenth meeting. The result of that is that there is no items on the December eighth scheduled next week committee meeting. So I will entertain a motion to cancel the committee of the whole meeting scheduled for next week, December eighth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty p.m.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Campbell Larry?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. That motion passes eight zero zero. Also, before we get to other matters in council schedule, Ms. Lacy, are you there? I may need your direction. We have a council work session scheduled on December thirteenth, a Monday. But we have no items that will be ready for discussing there. So go ahead. I'm sorry. Is that correct?
So that work session would be to preview items that would come to council during the legislative cycle beginning January twelfth. And at this time, I'm not aware of any items that are ready to be previewed. So with that in mind, council may wish to consider a motion to cancel that work session.
Thank you, and I will entertain a motion as such.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and second at the December thirteenth work session, which is a Monday at twelve noon, will be canceled. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bowden?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Campbell Larry?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. That motion passes eight zero zero. I do believe that one more item on the council schedule, and Ms. Lacy, I'll let you take it from here, having to deal with the council annual schedule for twenty twenty-two.
Sure. The council, the draft annual schedule was included in your packet materials. That, the adoption of that schedule requires a majority vote of, of council. In the event that council members wish to make amendments to that, that, that can be done by motion as well, and then a majority vote. If, if you're going to move at this time to amend that schedule in, in your motion, if you know or have some idea of what your intention for adding a meeting is, if you could state that, I think that, that might help inform that meeting in the future. If, if you're not fully aware, that, that information can be added at a future date when more is known.
Okay, thank you. And what I'm hearing is that we can entertain a motion to adopt this draft schedule this evening. And then we can also, in a secondary move, entertain a motion to amend or possibly amend this legislative schedule by a certain date in twenty twenty-two. If we choose to do that, or we cannot do it, we can do that second motion at a later date. Is that correct?
Oh, yes. Council does have the ability to amend their schedule at a future date. Yes.
Okay, I think that's what's important. I think, um, and this is debatable, by the way, but I think what's important is that we at least get the dates that's on our draft codified, so that other organizations or boards and commissions can schedule around our council chamber use. So I think that is the first thing. Did I approach that correctly? Okay, thank you. So I think it's proper that I will entertain a motion to adopt the schedule, this draft schedule for legislative schedule for twenty twenty-two.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Campbell Larry?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that motion passes eight zero zero. The second part of that would be a draft motion to amend the annual council legislative schedule by a certain date in twenty twenty-two. This is a debatable mo- Councilmember Smith, or Pete Moss Smith.
I'm sorry. I was gonna make a motion, the kind of motion that you were just talking about.
Hey, well then, I'll allow you to do that. To talk as much as.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I move that we amend the council legislative schedule for twenty twenty-two by adding a discussion of the twenty twenty-three budget at six p.m. on Tuesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just getting the details of that. Okay, you've heard the motion that we, that has been made to amend that annual council legislative schedule for twenty twenty-two by adding, and hopefully I get this correct, a discussion on budgetary processes on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Six p.m.
Six p.m. Thank you very much. Okay, you've heard the motion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmembers Campbell Larry?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Did you get that? Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Bowden? I'm sorry, Bowden?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. Oops, Campbell Larry.
You already got me. Yeah.
I started with you. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes eight zero zero. Ms. Lacy, this still, we can still do a future motion to amend the council schedule as things develop, moving into the new year, right? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Lastly, and maybe you have this information, Ms. Lacy. I talked with Councilmember Flaherty about scheduling a committee meeting. He's the chair of the Climate Action and Resilience Committee. And I think he wanted to schedule a meeting that day instead, or if we didn't hold the work session. So do you have information for that, or should?
It's my understanding that that meeting is going to take place on December the thirteenth at noon, and that will be on the Zoom platform. That meeting will be noticed and open for the public to attend.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
And I was gonna say one final thing. I believe the governor has extended the public health emergency, and so all remaining meetings in December will take place via the Zoom platform.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any other matters dealing with the council schedule, Ms. Lacy?
No.
Okay, thank you. It's been a very productive evening. I just love it when we're collegial and the plan comes together. So if we have no objections this evening, or no other council comments, then I hereby adjourn this meeting this evening.